At Island Park and the staff will continue with the regular procedures that they've been using. So some, some of the scare procedures, putting up some decoys and also sweeping up after the geese when they come to shore. The removal of aquatic vegetation, I'm happy to report that Public Works has done some work on the harvest store. And we, we have already sent out the advisory to the ministry, letting them know that on June fifteenth, weather permitting, we will actually be in the pond harvesting that 10% of aquatic vegetation that we're allowed to remove. We will be monitoring also if there's been any capture of any aquatic species and also the amount of tonnage removed from milk ponds. With the opening up of activities following COVID, we're now speaking with the Boys and Girls Club to see how we're going to proceed with summer camp this summer. We don't, we have no idea what registration is going to look like if parents are going to be sending the same amount of children to summer camp as we've had in the past. But we have multiple facilities that can accommodate children if we have to respect social, I should say, when we have to respect social distancing. So we may not have summer camp at Island Park. The children might actually be moved to the Glengarry Sports Palace in the new Michelle de Prado Hall upstairs to hold their activities. So these are all the discussions that we're having with the SDG Boys and Girls Club. Canada Day activities, we have received the Celebrate Canada grant.
If I can.
Are allowed to modify what our self.
Anne?
Just hold on, Anne.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Just with, yes, thank you. Just with regards to the, the day camp, I didn't think that restrictions were, that, that day camps were allowed at this point. Am I, am I, do I have old information?
So Premier Ford yesterday announced that he was looking at opening up day camps possibly as soon as July. So what we're doing is we're basically laying the groundwork in the eventuality that this does happen. Of course, we will follow all public health regulations and directives in this regards.
Okay, thank, thank you. Just one more, please, just, just backing up a little bit. When you were talking about the, the basketball court. Now, I know that individual team sports are allowed, but team sports are not. So how are we going to, you know, manage to make sure that there aren't, you know, you know, half a dozen kids playing basketball on that court?
So in that respect, we did put up signage and it follows the public health directives. So it's very clearly stated what you are allowed to do and not allowed to do. And I know for a fact that our bylaw officer has also been going around all of our facilities on a regular basis. And if we have complaints, he investigates those complaints.
Excellent. Thank you.
Counselor Manley.
And, and is, and is that the same for soccer fields as well?
So at this point, people are not supposed to be using those types of fields. As far as I know, those have not been released.
Just to follow, listening to, listening to, to Dr. Paul yesterday, he did talk about soccer fields, saying that, that, I mean, as long as there wasn't a group of people playing, that, that you could, you could kick the ball to, you know, you and your family member type of thing on, on the soccer fields, as long as it wasn't used for a game. I think that's what he said.
Okay, so I can definitely look into that. There is signage just saying, letting people know that any facility or any area that they're using in the park is not sanitized. So they are used at your own risk.
Okay, thank you.
I do agree, Jeff. He also mentioned baseball diamonds as well, so.
Yes, he did. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, continue.
So I was mentioning that we received the Celebrate Canada funding for what would traditionally be July 1st Canada Day. They've asked us to restructure our programming and to submit a plan for how we're going to be spending that money. So there's a possibility of sharing the money between the grotto activities that we council had approved and also possibly doing something that would be more in the winter months, which would be outside, possibly aligned with our family day weekend. So this is what staff is going to propose as activities. We're very concerned about social distancing and maintaining that and having activities outside in the wintertime might be more fortuitous as well as doing the virtual series with the grotto. So ICE rental forms have also been sent out to all of our ICE users. Several have already submitted their ICE requests for next year and Melissa's busy planning all of these in our sportal booking calendar as we speak. And we've also been looking with our program coordinator to, to convert some of our traditional program to online. You may have seen that we've just launched a virtual soccer skills workshop that is going to be occurring between the dates of June 2nd and June 25th on Tuesdays and Thursdays at 3:00 PM for half an hour. So, so far registration is very promising. We have seventeen individuals registered and the program was only launched a few days ago. For our facilities, we are continuing, continuing to maintain our facilities in the hopes that they're going to be used very soon. On the economic development side, I'm pleased to report that our development and marketing plan or strategy is underway. We will be having a committee meeting with the Community Development Committee on May 27th. And there's going to be some work that's going to be done with MDB Insights on that project. And we are also having regular economic development meetings with the other members in Stormont, Dundas and Glengarry and the counties, speaking especially now about recovery efforts to ensure that our economy is as viable as possible moving forward. And I'm pleased to report that there was a survey that was sent out to businesses in our area and we've had close to 200 responses on that. We've collated the information and actually Nick at the counties has prepared all of that in a very nice package for us and it will be sent along to the members of the Community Development Committee for their review. So that's the work plan for our Community Services Department.
Thank you, Anne. Are there any further questions? Seeing none, I'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Okay, moving on to Township and North Glengarry Communications Plan. I have a motion moved by Counselor Wentzing, seconded by Counselor Manley, that the Committee of the Whole receives Staff Report Number CS 202007, that the Committee of the Whole recommends the Township and North Glengarry Communications Plan be forwarded to council for its adoption. Anne?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we're happy to present the draft communications plan to council. In this document, basically, we've identified some communications principles on which the plan, the plan is based. So that, we want to ensure that information is accessible, accurate, consistent, relevant, timely and understandable. In Section 4.1, we address basically the communications management strategy with the flow through of information that helps us identify a proper communications plan to address each situation as it arises. Different communications methods were identified in Section 7.0 and that includes brochures, the community calendar of events, emails, letters, the township's websites, just to name a few. Section 8 addresses public engagement and Section 9 addresses internal communications. But one of the most important sections of the plan is Section 10 and that contains planned actions such as the creation of a township, an internal calendar for annual events and recurring activities, creating video updates and the continued streaming of municipal councils and public meetings amongst others. So we look forward to hearing council's comments on the plan.
Perfect. Thank you. Just right off the bat, I, I, I just, I would like to see us have a, some part of the plan that deals with the upper echelons of the staff to council. I, I know that we see this in, we get updates regularly from the fire chief after an event so that we know exactly what's going on. And generally on Fridays, we get a, you know, an update from the CIO. I'd like to see those put right into the plan. And I would also like to see something come up from the plan that allows for the other department heads to, you know, let us, give us information on the fly so that we're aware of what's happening in each department. Because it's, nothing's more embarrassing than when you meet somebody in the public and they ask you a question and you have no idea what they're talking about. So that's just what I saw and I saw Deputy Mayor Williams first.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I'd like to thank staff for, for preparing this communication plan. I, I know Counselor Manley and myself have been looking forward to this for a while and, and I think it's, I think it's very well done and I think it'll serve us well. I, I think maybe a few tweaks to it as the mayor mentioned. If I can make a request, Mr. Mayor, can we go through this document page by page, please? Because both Jeff and I have comments.
Go ahead. I'll start on page three.
Do you want, just, do you, do you want typos and things like that or?
So typos could be sent to me by email or.
Let's just talk about content.
Content, okay, yeah.
So basically, if nobody has any comments on the overview and the definitions, we could go right to page five, I think. The communication.
I have a comment on page five. Under accessible, it says information will be easy to find and understand. I don't think that applies to our website. Our website is not, the information is not easy to find, unfortunately. So I think, I think we have to look at our, one of the things that I feel we have to do is we definitely have to look at our website. The website in, in the, in the plan is, it says, it is the, I forget what the terminology is. It's the, it is the main source for information on municipal departments. But quite honestly, lots of people have told me I can't find things on the website. And then I go and try and find things on the website and I can't find them on the website. So I, we need, we have to do something with the website. That's my, my big one on this.
Any comment?
I agree.
Any comment from Anne?
So we can definitely add more to the planned action section, which is Section 10 for the website. So it's not only promoted as a, an information resource, but ensure information is easily or readily accessible.
No, we had talked, we had talked previously about redoing the website, have we not?
The website is only a few years old.
Well, I think in a strategic plan, didn't we talk about it?
We did, we did talk about the website when we were strategic planning. I'm sure we did.
Because if you pick three random things to find, you can't find them.
So definitely redoing a website could be something that might be planned for 2021 because that would definitely be a capital budget item.
Yep. You know, I, I think though, when you go on to other municipalities' websites, I'd like to say they're as bad as ours. At Stormont, you can't find anything when I'm going through there. South Glengarry, same thing, you know, so I think that we need to work with, maybe that's something we can work with the other municipalities on, trying to get something that's maybe a little bit more uniform and so, and easily to understand because you're right, trying to find anything on there is, is difficult at times, so. Deputy Mayor Williams.
Okay, it's sort of related to this and it's just a general comment that I think would be helpful if it was reflected throughout the document is, is the identification of the, the position, not the, the individual position, not the name, but the position like administrative assistant, for example, that would be responsible for the various items of communication going through this document. It, it would give it more of a living feel and, and allow it to, those, those individ, those staff members who are responsible for, for example, website updates from their departments, for example, or, you know, the initial, you know, whoever's preparing press releases or, you know, that, that the actual position is identified throughout the document. I think that would be very helpful because it would allow, first of all, the individual would then need to take responsibility for that. And secondly, then a council would know, you know, if, if we're lacking information, who, who to go to.
Okay. If I'm moving through. Page six.
Good.
Page seven.
Yeah, page seven.
Go ahead, Counselor Manley.
Yeah, just on the, a couple of things on this page. Wondering if we couldn't, on the second one down, so you've got your frontline staff and your senior management team and then underneath that you've got the box that says the CIO notifies council and staff of the issues and asks them to refer questions from the public. To refer questions from the public back to the CIO. Could, could there be a, a sort of a time element to that as well? So the CIO notifies council and staff, I don't know if immediately is the right word, but as quickly as possible, that kind of thing.
So we'll definitely, I'll go back with the CEO and we'll look over that component and put in a realistic timeline.
Okay, and the only, the other, the other one, if we go down to where it says CMT creates a communication plan and then underneath that the CIO approves the communication plan and then the CIO sends it to council. I would like to see CIO sending that to council right underneath CMT creates a communication plan. So before the, the CIO approves the plan, I would like, I would like the, the council to have a look at it.
Well, I think she's just approving it for release to council. You know, she's not approving it and it's done. I think she's just approving it from what she gets from the CMT. And then, and then it's brought to council. I think that's what the intention of that is.
Okay, accepted.
She's going through and, and making changes or, or checking, you know, for spelling errors, all those kinds of things. And then it's sent to council for feedback on it, is how I, is how, how I interpret that. Anne?
I'll just make sure that the language is clear.
Okay. I, I didn't read it that way with, with the arrow going to the right.
Right. Well, just because she, and that's, every report goes that way. Every report starts with whoever the department head is, it goes to the CIO. She approves the report and then the report comes to council. So that's generally how the, the municipal world works. Everything, it filters through the CIO then to council. I mean, we can change that if you, if you'd, if you'd like, but that's generally how things of, are supposed to work. Williams, do you have your hand up?
Yeah, you know, I, I, obviously the, the, the CIO needs to, you know, have a handle on what's going on. And, and I, I get that. I guess the question is, is, and I think this is what Jeff's trying to, trying to get at and I think we need to be very specific because in my view, those are with regards to staff reports, but when you're talking about communication, especially communication that's going out to the public, it, I think it, it, it needs to operate specifically with council in mind. So for example, routine events and projects that I know Anne has referred to, to that in, in the action plan that are going to be placed on presumably as some calendar. Those happen every year, right? Like our, our, our leaf and yard waste pickup happens every year. Hazardous waste, whatever. Those, so those, those kinds of communications are going to go out. But I think what's important here is that council is actually informed. Okay, just, you know, heads up folks, here's an email or, or the actual brochure in our mailbox informing us that this is going out to the public. Just because it's not that even necessarily the date that's important, but it's the fact that the, the public is now being informed of something that, that we need to know. Because if we get questioned on it, we have no idea, then it makes us, makes us look foolish and, and not in the loop.
I, so. That's, but Counselor, Deputy Mayor Williams, that's exactly what it's saying. It's saying that the CEO gets it and it has to come to council for, for us to look at it.
No, but I, I, I want it to be more specific because.
She said she's going to make it more specific.
Excuse me, let me explain. So that, but that's for routine. But then there are new events and projects and we've also requested this in the past that are new, okay? So this is new information going out to the public. And I think what we have requested in the past and this need, I, I would like to see it incorporated in this plan, that anything that is a new event or project, that it actually comes, comes to council for feedback, you know, before it, it then gets either mailed out or emailed out or goes on social media. So one of them is just making sure council's informed. And then the other aspect of it, depending on what it is, is making sure council has, has input.
Counselor Manley.
Yeah, and just, so just on that, a perfect example came up today. Today on Facebook, North Glengarry posted the zoning amendment public meeting, which shows a whole bunch of changes or lists a whole bunch of changes coming up in our zoning amendment. Council did not have a look at that before, so I mean, that, that's what you're talking about, Mr. Mayor. Those kind of things that we need, we need to know those ahead of time so that we can, if somebody does call us, so that we have that information that we're able to deal with it.
That's exactly what I'm talking about. That's why there needs to be another section that this, that talks about senior staff and council and.
Yeah, okay.
Not in this document. So that's what, that's what we need to do. But again, I need to, I just want to say that we can't micromanage. Okay, that's not, we need to get the information, but at the end of the day, we can't micromanage.
No, and all we're asking for is information here.
Heads up.
Yeah, heads up.
So is there anything else on page seven? No?
Yeah.
Good?
Good.
Hey, Jake? Counselor Manley.
I'm just wondering, Anne, about, about rejigging the, the order in from this point on. So 5.0 is the communication plans and we have, basically have three of them there. Is that correct? A planned event, an emergent situation and an emergency.
So this is just an example showing, it's a scenario, so it's an example. So it's not.
Right.
To this.
It's not, sorry, it's not a.
It's not limited to what's there.
No, okay, all right. But I'm just wondering if we shouldn't relabel those, like the first one should be 5.1, the second one 5.2, the third one 5.3? And list those three in order and put all of the, the examples into an appendix at the back of the document? I'm just wondering if that would make it, make it easier to, to maneuver through and to, to read.
Understand that.
Does that make sense to you or? Okay, thank you.
Any further there? Page nine. Counselor Manley?
Yeah, yeah, a question about the, the first one, the E11 complaint reporting tool. Is this, is this something that we're going to use with all departments?
So presently, I think there's an investigation happening with the senior management team to see which type of reporting might be best. There are different tools out there. So there are possibilities of using this type of tool in the future.
Okay, because I think from, from my dealings with, with Public Works or whatever and how they're tracking things, I think it would be a great tool to use with all our departments. Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Yeah, I agree with, with Jeff on this. It looks like, it looks like a good tool to be used and could probably be used just for, just information sharing, even if it isn't a complaint, like, you know, that work needs to get done on a certain area or whatever. But I, I was, I'm just curious about something. What, there, there, there have been times when, you know, I've put a, emailed in a complaint or a concern, shall we say, and, and then I get an email back saying, okay, you know, will be dealt with. And, and then I just, you know, I know it's in the hands of a capable staff member. And then I assume it's dealt with and then, I don't know, a week, maybe two weeks later, I get an email saying, you know, it hasn't been dealt with. I'm just, I'm just wondering if there's a way we can incorporate into, without it being too staffing, labor intensive. It's not the intention here. It's just so that as council members, we can know when we've put something out there, you know, to, you know, from a resident, that, that, that we get a, a message back from somebody, whatever department it is, that it, it has been resolved, for example. I'm not sure if that's possible or not, but it would be, I think, helpful.
That might be incorporated within that, that staff to council part and, you know, from council back to staff. So I know I do agree that oftentimes we, that happens and we don't hear anything back and then we hear back from the resident two weeks or three weeks later that nothing's been, that it hasn't been completed, but not to say that staff's not working.
Right, right.
Thank you. So I thought the document presents very professionally. It clearly was a lot of work. It's comprehensive. It sounds like there's a few minor details to sort out. And I wondered further to Karma's comment if there might be a separate policy that addresses concerns or complaints that's separate from the communication strategy.
Anne?
So I'll review that with the CIO because I think that we'll have to look and see how that meshes, if that's really communications or if complaints is something totally separate.
Right. Okay.
I think we're dealing with two different, different situations here.
Okay, we'll keep moving here. Page 10, anything? Counselor Manley?
Just wondering, I know that, I know that our North Glengarry Fire Department has a dedicated Facebook page. I'm wondering if, if that's the best, is that the best move for communication? Or should it fall under, under our Facebook page, North Glengarry's Facebook page? I just, I find sometimes that, that it seems like, sometimes there's too much, it seems like to me.
So having worked in other municipalities, I've seen cases where each different firehouse had their own Facebook page. We only have the one and I think with that, we have our North Glengarry Township Facebook page, which contains all kinds of information. You can go from recreation all the way to government funding. Meanwhile, the fire department is specific to that. So if anyone wants information, timely information from the fire department, which we always do share, mind you, it's very easy to find on the fire department Facebook page. You wouldn't have to scroll down very far to find information about burning permits or burn ban. It would be very clearly listed. If you were looking for a burn ban on our township Facebook page, I can post between 10 and 12 different advisories a day. So I think it makes sense to have those separate.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Williams.
Yeah, so if they need to say separate, then that, that's, that makes sense. But I do, I, I would like to see in this plan somewhere the, the acknowledgement that, that, that the subject matter, you know, must be township appropriate. And, and I'm not saying that it hasn't been appropriate information. I'm just saying that it, it's easy to, to overpost and then, you know, people don't pay attention to, to sites that, that, that are just endlessly posting. I, I think we need to be maybe a little more picky and choosy about that and, because I, I, but I do believe that the, the social media posts are very valuable and I think we need to make sure we keep, keep them that way.
Any further discussion on 10? Page 11, just a example. We're looking at all examples. Is there anything? We're looking at all examples. Is there anything in those examples that you'd like to discuss? No?
Actually, just one quick thing. It's a bit back on page ten, too, but page eleven, page twelve. It's nice to get the informative posts, but it's nice to get the fun ones, too. So like, was that back, that was a few months ago, when Tara posted a video of her talking to, I think, Marius at the water main, just kind of explaining what was happening. So it's as much to get to know the employees, because I think that was something else we talked about, a strategic planning, just to make everybody a face of their department at least, so that when we say, oh, you know, to a complaint or a customer saying, we'll contact, oh, I know him, or I've heard of him, and I hear he's whatever. So I think the social media, obviously, it's the wave of the future. So like I say, as much informative as more, this is what we're doing today, and it's going well.
No, I agree. That's for sure. And I think it's been, when we've seen some of those videos, when we're doing construction on on a bridge or something, I I find that they're informative, and you see the amount of views that we do get. So I think I think those things are important to Council Noble. Any further discussion on that? Go ahead, Anne.
Oh, actually, that is included in the section ten as one of the points about featuring the mayor or possibly staff. And of course, those videos, the water main breaks or replacement, the relining, those proved to be extremely popular with our residents.
Well, just.
Yeah, go ahead.
If you just think, think about the number of of views we had when we were putting water in Maxville and and Zoe's Zoe's posts that that, you know, they were you know, amazing, so.
Okay, moving on to page seventeen. Any issues with that? Go ahead, Council Manley.
Just in the very first box under the scenario, Public Works Director or Design that notifies C A O, C A O who then notifies council. So we're talking about an emergent situation here. It says as needed. I I'd like to take that out. I I think any emergent situation, council needs to know.
Go ahead, Anne.
No, that's fine. It's taken out.
And the only other thing, sir, just to follow up to that, the only other thing I had was, it lists under the box underneath that, it says communication officer then starts to put this in place. Do we have a plan if the communication officer is not available?
Yes, so actually, it would be the similar scenario as if there was an emergency. I would be the backup to
Okay.
to Tara, in effect, to our communications officer, or even the C O would.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Okay. Keep going.
One, one thing, if I might, if I may.
You may.
I think was it Councilor Jan Arter that came to see us right up while she was talking about the power outage, the big blackout in in Ottawa last year, and she mentioned that her, she understood she was not staffed, she couldn't fix anything, she couldn't do anything, but it was reiterated to her and to some of the other Ottawa councillors that their job was communications, so so that not everyone would be calling into the office to ask a question. We would have enough information. Again, we're not going to fix anything, we're not going to do anything. But if you just give us the headlines and say, can you, if anyone asks, can you communicate this, or, you know, just to make sure we know enough that if someone asks us the the barest of questions, that we know it. Again, we're not trying to get in the way. That was her point. We're just here to pass the word on. So whatever you want us to communicate, make sure to tell us. Don't tell us anything we're not supposed to know or not supposed to tell, but just tell us enough that we can spread the word and say it's under control. This is happening. Or give us a, give us a directive. That's the only thing I would want.
Good point.
I agree.
Thank you. Moving on to page twenty. Nothing?
Uh, hang on. Oh, no.
Twenty one?
Eight. So, oh, no, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
So section eight. I'm just wondering in B, like, A says engagement mandated by legislation. So that's about basically, that's legislated public engagement. B, I'm just wondering if it could use a little more explanation to it. Other engagements whose primary purpose may be to provide information and see feedback from the public, which generally speaking, our town halls, that's, that's, that's the purpose of them. I just think it could use that little extra explanation there.
Okay. Anything further? Okay, moving on to page twenty two. Anything? Twenty three?
But if.
Yeah, go ahead, Deputy. Council Manley, go ahead.
Just, just the website thing again, or whatever. I think we, I think we need to look at a a long term plan, and if it has to be next to, that's fine, but what we do, I, my feeling is that that we have to look at some sort of upgrade to our website, and I don't know whether there, maybe there are municipal municipal based websites out there that we could, that we can tap into. I don't know. I I don't know the details on that, Anne, so. But if if staff could look into that or whatever, and hopefully we can can have something. And it would be really nice, once we have a new website, to relaunch that website and communicate that to our to our residents that we now have a new website, and may maybe we should be asking the the maybe we should be asking for public consultation on the on the website, what what people want to see in our website. That that might be like an online survey of some sort, or, you know, what kind of things have you have been frustrated with on our website that we could do better, or we could make it better, on something like that, possibly.
Good idea.
Okay. And that's the end of the document, so Deputy Mayor Williams.
So the in the action plan here, I I don't know, Anne, what your, how how are you going to do this, whether you're going to create a separate communication with council section, or whether you're going to embed this all along the way, I guess, that's your call, but I was just going to say that in the action section, if it's going to be embedded, that, you know, sort of weekly communication with council from C O and and somehow or another regular communication with council directors, I I either go in this section somehow, unless it's in a different section.
Okay, we'll make sure that it's very visible in the document.
I'm sorry, can you guys still hear me?
Yeah.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, Deputy or Council Manley?
So one, one, just one last thing, Anne. So once we get this, the draft cleaned up a little bit or whatever, and it goes back to council for approval, is there a plan then to roll this out to the public? Are we communicating our communication plan to the public? So they're aware of it? I don't know. Is there?
I think most of this is a working document for administration. My suggestion would be that we start working with it and make sure that things work and the information that will come out from staff to the public will reflect that it's a robust communications plan. But I really think that this is a working document for administration and council.
Okay, okay.
Okay, perfect. So we'll have that come back to us at a council meeting and make sure that we have some warning on it so that we can comment on it prior. Okay, so there's nothing further on this. I'll call the vote on the motion. All those in favor of the motion?
What was the motion?
I'm not reading it again. That the Committee of the Whole recommends a township and North Glengarry Communications Plan be forwarded to council for its adoption. All those in favor?
Well, you're talking about a revised.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's gonna, it'll come to us, and we'll, you'll be able to comment individually, and then it'll come to council for another discussion.
Perfect.
Good?
In favor?
All of those in favor, carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Good job.
Yes, thanks, Anne.
Thank you.
Moving on to the Treasury Department, I have a motion moved by Council Noble, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, that the Committee of the Whole receives staff report T R twenty twenty dash sixteen, the Director of Finance Treasurer twenty twenty work plan, updated as of May thirteenth, twenty twenty. Welcome, Kim. Somebody want to go check her desk, see she's awake? Kim?
Kimmy?
All the discussion on the communication plan must have put her to sleep.
Okay, we'll, we'll come back to it. We'll move on to planning, building, and bylaw enforcement. I have a motion moved by Council Manley, seconded by Council Noble, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report number B P twenty twenty sixteen, the Director of Building, Bylaw and Planning twenty twenty work plan. Welcome, Jacob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah, the work plan for the last month has been, well, is very similar to the last one. I will just go through quickly to the, to actually what changed. So for the Maxville Water Project, in the last two months, I only received four applications for water connection, so that has slowed down a bit. Like I mentioned before, we're not preventing any plumbers to go and do the work, and they still have to apply before, but we are holding on on the inspection inside of people's basement. So this has slowed down. I'm assuming it's going to pick up when the province starts to reopen. As far i- in the report here, when you get down to building permit section, you will see that that has been done before, the new provincial has changed that, so as of yesterday, the permits are allowed to be issued like before, so it's it's a, it's a full go for the building permits. I issued yesterday thirty two building permits, and on my desk, I have another seventeen that I have to review and issue in the last, in the next, sorry, couple of weeks, so. I just checked, and it's very similar. We're about two permits off from last year, so things have not really slowed down construction wise, even though that had, that had happened. And then, if I keep going down, bylaw enforcement has been pretty steady. It's pretty much the same thing. Bylaw enforcement officer is still doing his his rounds. He's checking up on all the township's property. And like Anne mentioned before, he's now going to have a closer look at, just to make sure that the 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 tennis courts and stuff like that is being used as it's supposed to. He's still disinfecting the office every evening and still responding to to various complaints. And planning wise, so as mentioned before, the township has opted to keep going with the application as, like, we're not waiting until the end of the emergency order to process our applications. She's getting pretty much application the same rate as last year also, so that has not slowed down a little, like, it has slowed down a little bit, but not much, and besides that, yeah, that's pretty much it. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Council Manley.
Yeah, Jacob, just wondering, so the the announcement that went out today on Facebook about the zoning amendments, the public meeting for the zoning amendments?
Yes.
Is there, is there a draft copy of that that we can, we can get a hold of, or?
Well, yeah, I just saw Cash Appa. Maybe she can answer that, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so Council Manley, the notice is actually the same notice that was sent to Glengarry News. So what a lot of municipalities have been doing is using online tools to make the public more aware, since everybody's online now, so in addition to the baseline requirements in the Planning Act to circulate via mail and the news, it's really a good practice to post it online, and I agree, it might have come as a little bit of a surprise for you, but it is a common practice across many cities and towns in Ontario.
Yeah, that that's, that's not my issue. My issue is it can go there, that's fine. It's just, are, do we have, do we as councillors have a copy of that? Because I know I'm going to get calls, especially when there's, there was something in there that said, talking about changing of the definition of agriculture. You can just bet that I'm going to get a ton of calls over that. I imagine Brenda's going to get some, too. But those kind of things or whatever, so do we have, do we get a copy of that ahead of time so we can read through it and and understand it, or?
Yes, so I can send you the draft report. It's not completely finalized, but yeah, I do have a draft report. And so in terms of the content of the planning reports, it has not changed. The the timing is still the same. The only difference is that it was posted online, and maybe it's more visible, so you might get more questions. That's, that's true.
Yeah, okay, all right. If we could get a draft copy of it, that'd be great. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, any further questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is cleared. Okay. Moving on to North Glengarry Zoning and Official Plan Designation. I have a motion moved by Council Wensink, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report number B P twenty twenty seventeen, the North Glengarry Zoning and Official Plan Designation Guide. Welcome, Casha.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the Planning Department, with the help of the G I S technician, we've been working on updating the zoning zoning layers in the G I S database with the zoning amendments and severances between two thousand thirteen and two thousand nineteen, so everything is up to date right now, and it is online for the first time ever through the S D G online mapping tool. So the public can basically access it, and I will be posting the link to the mapping online for the public on our website. So the info that's available to the public is the official plan designations, zoning designations, which are, again, as I said, first time ever available for the township of North Glengarry. All the other townships had this information available in S D G, only we were lacking this, so it's great. We're on par. There's also natural feature information, civic addresses, and servicing on the S D G mapping. And in order to facilitate public access to all this information that's newly available, I asked Daniel, the G I S tech, to create a PDF or PowerPoint guide for the public. It has step by step guide how to access the zoning information. It's very clear. We did test it on Jacob, and he liked it, so I think it's going to be a go. If any of you would like to have a go at it, would type in your property address, see if it's clear enough, provide me with comments before I post it to the website, that would be really appreciated. If if you see anything that's maybe not clear, that would be great. So I I trust you had a chance to read through the guide. It's a PDF format in your package. But I will go briefly through it, just, so I'm going to share the screen with you and my PowerPoint. The PowerPoint that was prepared, which is the actual guide. Just one second. Okay, so can everyone see my screen?
Not yet. Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, there.
Okay, perfect. So let me just move this large. Okay, so this is basically what's going to be available to the public on the website in the next week or so, once I receive your comments or additional written comments. So first, it starts off with the general overview, so this screenshot is what you get through the public link that will be posted. You have, you have to click on Community Maps to access the information. Then you have the search bar. You will type in the address you're interested in. And then it's going to zoom to the property. As an example, Daniel put the township office address, ninety Main Street in Alexandria. He put extra information, how to zone, zoom it onto the property. Here you have different layers. So again, as I mentioned before, civic address, highway exit, servicing, and so on. So again, you can zoom in a high level on the property, on zoom out to see it more in the regional context. If you click on the bubble of the property, you're going to get more information on the zoning, including general, including the symbol and the wording. If there is a special exception, like say there was a zoning amendment for a special use, it's going to be there, too. Let's see, what else? Moving forwards. So as I mentioned, special exception will be there too, if, if it's applicable to a property. The second part of the guide is how to access official plan amendments. So the SDG County's official plan. So to access that, anyone needs to click on the official plan tab, which is at the end there. And then you can zoom in and out to see higher close level information. Again, you will type in the address or the roll number or PIN number to locate the property as in the example there. And then you will have similarly as the zoning, all the information that's publicly accessible through the counties. Here, for example, Commercial District Designation for the Township Property. And then again, if anyone is in doubt, Daniel put exact instructions how to read the legend. So you can click here and see what this means. It's a county road or another road. What is the blue? It's a water body and so on. And then finally, it's important to provide direct links to our zoning bylaw as the SDG official plan. And I've included the information to the Planning Department. So that's Chantel's Planning Assistant contact information and my email if anyone has any doubts. And that's it. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Kasia. That's, that's awesome to have now on our website, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Yeah, I think this is great. Is there, did you say you're looking for comments on it?
Yes, actually I would like, maybe if one of you could just go through the guide and type in your property address and see if it's clear enough as a user, because Jacob uses it every day. So he's not the best test subject.
Is, is there any way that we can move through it in an interactive, on an interactive screen with you, all of us? Not tonight, not today. Is there any way we can do that?
Oh, definitely. I could organize a session just on Zoom for the councillors. That's a great idea.
I, I think that that would probably be helpful. And then that way, if we could livestream it, then, then the public could sit in on it as well.
Sure. Yeah, that's an excellent idea. And I think I should circulate it to the public. So they're really, oh, three weeks ahead as usual.
I think that would be great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any further comments?
If we, if we livestream, you want us to use your own personal addresses or just randomly just?
That's funny.
Well, you know where Jamie's address will be.
Okay. So we will, we have that, that the Council of Township North Glengarry receives the staff report, North Glengarry Zoning and Official Plan Designation. All those in favor?
Yep.
Joanne? Oh, you're frozen. That's why I didn't see your hand. Okay. Moving on to, we'll go back to Treasury Department. Kim, are you on?
I'm here.
Okay. So we have a...
Don't know if you can see me, but you can hear me, right?
Yeah.
We can hear you.
Yeah, here.
I have a motion moved by Councilor Noble, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, that the Committee of the Whole receives staff report TR 2020-16, Director of Finance Treasurer 2020 Work Plan Updated as of May 13, 2020.
We've been working on some policies. They're in draft form, but they're going to wait till quarter three for a presentation to council. Asset management software, we need to get an RFP out. It was supposed to be done in the early spring, but due to COVID, it's very hard to get people out to assess your buildings because that's one of the things that's lacking for meeting the grant requirements. So I have a draft RFP ready. So that should be going out shortly. Tax Department, Water Department, we're still trying to be diligent on collections, but at this point in time, we're also being very lenient. We'll put it that way because people are out of work. Penalties and interest have been relaxed. So we're, we're just holding off till business gets back to normal. The CWWF Grant for the Maxwell Water Project, the deadline was March 31, 2020. There remains about $3.5 million worth of work to be done to the water treatment plant. They have given us an extension till September 2021. So we'll be able to claim the full amount of the grant, which is great. The year-end audit is currently underway. It may be delayed somewhat. I was hoping by June 30th, we could get everything up and running, but we're still waiting on documents and it's very trying because everything's being scanned and things like that. I'm still hoping for June 30th. There's going to be new tax bills created for final billing. They're not going to be on eight and a half by fourteen. They're going to be on eight and a half by eleven. There's also some messaging we can put. So those that are on pre-authorized payment, it'll say this is your tax bill, but please do not pay. This is pre-authorized through the township or through your bank. But there's also going to be some detail. Currently on the old tax bills, it simply said drains and an amount. Whereas now there's going to be separate lines for different drains. They're on, there'll be more details, which is what the public wants and what they need to know, because that's what we're questioned on all the time. Right now, staff is being very diligent. We're coming in every second day alternating. So when I'm in, Rachel's not and vice versa. So we're still, you know, dealing the social distancing. But things are going well and I think this continuity is, is doing well.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Moving on to, I have a, what are we looking at? Treasury, our penalty forgiveness. I have a motion moved by Councilor Manley, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, that the Committee of the Whole recommends that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accept report TR 2020-17, the Director of Finance Treasurer for Penalty Forgiveness and recommends that penalty and interest charges for taxes and walk, water works arrears be extended for the month of June 2020. Kim?
Well, during the pandemic, the township, the council of the township agreed to forgive March and, sorry, April and May's penalties and interest. The emergency has not been lifted yet. I'm recommending the penalties and interest be forgiven for June 1st, but it's also council's decision. I mean, we can go back to normal if you wish or council can extend it for June and July, but at this point in time, it doesn't look like it's going to be over for June 1st. And we are getting questions at the Township Office if this is going to happen or not. There's also been questions from the various departments on how strict to get with trying to collect things because there are extreme water arrears and tax arrears. So we'd like some direction from council, please.
Okay, members of council, I'll give my opinion first. I don't think the emergency order's been lifted by the province yet. So I, I would agree that perhaps we should do it for the month of June. I, I think that we should follow up with people on the arrears, just to make sure that it's, you know, that they're on tough times or not, that they're just not paying. So I think that's something that we should continue to do and be diligent reaching out to our residents. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Deputy Mayor Williams?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I, I agree. I agree with you 100%. I, I think continue to reach out to the residents so that they, you know, if there's any way that we can work with them, that they know that we will work with them, if they can continue making some kind of payments and so that they know, you know, at the end of the day, they're going to have to pay it one way or the other. And but I agree that, you know, the emergency is not over and, and I agree with the June deadline and then we can, or the, the June waiving of penalty and then we can reassess in July.
So here is the question asked today. We do send out reminder notices for, you know, delinquent accounts. Do we, we usually follow up with phone calls too? Is that something council wishes us to persist or so we just deal with the, the notices at this point in time?
I think that we should still work, that we should still reach out to, to people, you know, just to hear from them and that, you know, that they would appreciate that they can't pay their bill right now. But as Councilor Williams said, we just don't want to get them to get too deep into, into tax arrears so that it becomes a problem in the future. So you know, if there's a, even if they can only pay a hundred dollars or something to keep it going. But again, we're going to be lenient at this point, you know, while the emergency order is still on.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Noble?
Yeah, and I think in the phone call, it would be very simple for you to find out what they want to do. If this is going to be an extended situation, like those of us fund people in the travel industry, we won't be working for a long time. So June, July, August isn't going to make a difference. They may still have a problem. Or they just had something extraordinary that happened in April coincidentally during this time. So that might save you from a lot more follow-ups. You can get the direction right there from that person. And then even if you have to come back to us for a July 1st deadline, you already know that you've done half the work.
It's, it's not so bad for, for taxes. We're really on board for taxes, but it's those people that are delinquent and water, we tend to cut them off. And we're not doing it right now. We're not doing that right now. But they're the, they're the ones that we didn't know if we should reach out to them or not because taxes is, is, is pretty good. And those that have made arrangements are trying to honor them and those that can't have called us, which is great. It's the water ones we don't know what to do with.
Well, I, I, I still think that we should reach out to people in the Water Department. The Water Department should reach out to people and just to, you know, ensure that, you know, that give them the information that, you know, there are no penalties and interest at this point. But, you know, can you make some payments or if not, that's great.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Okay, moving on to Public Works Department Work Plan. I have a motion moved by Councilor Noble, seconded by Councilor Manley, that the Committee of the Whole receives staff report number PW 2020-05, Public Works Work Plan Update. Welcome, Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good afternoon, Council. So I had provided you a work plan update in April, but this is just another update. I guess the first item is COVID-19. So really, nothing has really changed with respect to our operations from the administrative side. So myself and the administrative assistant, we're trying to attend to the office a bit more regularly now. So hopefully that will be successful and maybe in time, things will be back to the new normal. Roads and Fleet. So we have, we've awarded our gravel tender and gravel application will start shortly. I'm told that North Stormont may be in front of us. So it may be a little bit delayed. And then after gravel application, calcium will go down after that. As you probably all know, we have also hired our new transportation manager, Michelle Cudier. And the process to replace him, the Alexandria four-person is underway. Water and sewer. So things are, are going along as normal. We continue to do our monitoring and reporting as required. I had reported to you in my last report about excessive sanitary flow in Maxwell as related to the spring thaw. And there may be some issues with, with respect to reduced water taking from groundwater and maybe an increase in the local aquifer. At any rate, some additional investigation is required there. And on the Maxwell Water Project, I'm, I'm scheduled to meet with the consultant to review deficiencies and design issues on Monday. Spring hydrant flushing is scheduled to be completed this week. And we've had very, very few issues or complaints. The sewer flushing and CCTV program began the week of May 4th. We did find that certain sewers were dirtier than expected, meaning that we have to do some additional flushing. Landfill. So our landfill has been busy. And we've had to move the active area to, to the north entrance as the regular area was, was too wet. But essentially, there's, there's no issue there. With respect to drainage, as you may know, our drainage superintendent is on some long-term or sick leave. But essentially, a lot of our drainage work is, is focusing on cleanup from what we did in the winter of 2019, 2020. Rare and waste collection. So I had reported to you with respect to waste collection and disposal. There are some incremental costs associated with increased garbage. They aren't significant. I expect that as a department, we can absorb those incremental costs. There were some work plan activities related to rare. As, as the CAO had reported earlier, the county in partnership with all of the local municipalities is looking at efficiencies with respect to waste management. And so we've put those work plan activities on hold for the time being. The county is expecting that a final report from our consultant is due, I believe, in January. And in fact, the kickoff meeting with the consultant is tomorrow. With respect to capital, the Alexandria Water Treatment Plant Project is on schedule. Our consult, our contractor rather, has not indicated that he sees any delays nor has he indicated any cost for extras. So that's good news. Our equipment purchases have been completed. As Anne had indicated, the weed harvester, we repaired it and really it was a maintenance item. So once we put it into the water, we're hopeful that we won't have the issues that we did in the past. Creek Road Bridge is scheduled to go to tender in June with construction to be completed in the fall. And as you also know, the Dominion Street project, bridge project has been deferred to 2021. Road construction projects have not yet started, but they will. One project that is in the capital plan, and I apologize, it's not in the report, is sidewalk work. Council had authorized a total of $150,000 for sidewalk work. And our first initiative is to replace the sidewalk on Sandfield South. That's approximately 680 meters of sidewalk. What we plan to do is instead of sloping the sidewalk towards the road, so if you've walked the sidewalk, you'll, you'll kind of maybe understand what I'm trying to say. The sidewalk dips sharply to the road. So rather than do that, the sidewalk will dip in the, in the direction of travel. So that will reduce trip hazards. We're also going to increase the width from 1.5 meters to 1.8 meters. Sandfield South is very, very, very wide. And so that extra 300 millimeters of asphalt won't be missed. And the added benefit is that it also now gives you backing for the pore of the new concrete and also gives you additional room for side slope issues. So other than that, I don't think I have any other updates.
Thank you, Doug. Yeah, I'm glad to see that we're doing something on Sandfield Street, the sidewalk there. I get many complaints about that one. Any other comments from Council, Deputy, or Councilor Manley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, Doug, just wondering, we mentioned, I think, a couple of meetings ago about a list of roads for, that are scheduled to be painted, the line painted down the middle. Is that still coming or where are we at with that?
It is still coming. Just yesterday, I found what we did in 2019. So I need to discuss with Michelle whether, whether we paint every other year, for example, or whether that was the total list of what was painted and what we paint on a regular basis. So our list is still coming. Hopefully by the end or by mid next week.
Okay, perfect. Thanks very much.
Councilor Noble?
I was just wondering, the Creek Road Bridge, the reason why construction was waiting was because of school. So I just was wondering if we're able to push that earlier, like if that was in your plans already, because now we're not waiting for the school bus.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. Unfortunately, our design consultant didn't move faster and I didn't know what the schedule was. So the design is not yet complete. So we can't, we can't tender until the design is complete. So it's going to be tendered in mid to late June, unfortunately.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of things, please, Doug. The sixth concession, do you have a, do you have any idea of when the sixth concession might be started? Do you have any schedule at all? And is it going to continue on from the, the existing new pavement going west? Didn't, because didn't we talk at one point, it was probably before Doug was joined us about maybe paving from the west going east?
Yes, we, yes, we did discuss that because because of the water project, it was pretty bad up there. But yeah, that was discussed for sure.
Okay, are you, has anyone talked to you about that, Doug? No? Okay.
So we've, we've consciously put road paving projects sort of on hold for the time being until we've filled the transportation manager position. I'm not too sure whether Michelle is aware of what sort of discussions went on. But I can certainly touch base with you, Deputy Mayor or the mayor, about what the intention was. So I do know there are some geotechnical and drainage issues on concession six. And I'm not too sure exactly what we've done about those.
Okay, well, that, I'm glad anyway, we're opening up that discussion so you can, we can figure out where to go from there. I, I've had a number of people contact me recently about a large item pickup in North Glengarry. Now, I know council has been discussing large item pickup for some years and we've never put it in the budget as of yet. However, you know, there are some people out there who've got some good ideas about incorporating sort of, you know, put it at the end of your driveway. See if other people can use the item and, you know, pick away at what people put at the end of their driveways. And then at the end of the day, you know, what is left over can go to the landfill. But that there are ways to reduce the amount that go to the landfill. I'm just wondering if maybe we can begin a conversation about trying to put some program together, you know, where we can at least consider a large item pickup in the future?
If I can just jump in, perhaps I'll put the CIO on the spot here. We've had some discussions in the last couple of weeks. Sarah, are you there?
Yes, I am. So we did discuss this, actually, I had Counselor Noble sent an email this morning to myself and Linda from Ryer about this. And we had sort of discussed earlier last month about maybe starting this up again in the spring. And with COVID restrictions, we didn't think it was a good idea to do it this year. Or sorry, not this year, but in the spring. So we're looking at the possibility of doing it in the fall and also doing a whole cleanup with it too. So maybe looking at something like the trash treasures they have, I believe, and how they have it in South Glengarry, where they do something where on a Saturday, you would put your trash to treasure out. And then we do the large item pickup perhaps the next week. And then also allow for additional landfill as well. And also encouraging people to put things on Facebook Marketplace or reuse your item or even recycle. So we were looking at perhaps doing a whole campaign over it and not just the large item pickup, but we do want to make sure that any of the COVID restrictions are over before we do anything like that.
Okay, well, I guess that answers that, doesn't it? My one last question, please. With regards to Creek Road, I know that the Creek Road Bridge, I know that the, the engineer was working with the property owner to make, to see that the bridge wouldn't, the old bridge wouldn't have to come down for the new one was built. Is that still the case?
Yes, so indeed, we are slightly realigning the road and approaches so that the old, the new bridge will be constructed without, without having to remove the old bridge. So the short answer is yes.
Thank you very much.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, moving on to other business. Counselor Noble, you wanted to bring something up?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have some free time on my hands over the next few months. But in a conversation about a larger issue, I was looking at, the first thing that I wanted to bring up is farmers markets. Although they were deemed essential a while ago, they have not gotten, that's not a real word, they have not been given the okay to actually open. And so obviously vendors with things like asparagus and flowers and stuff have nowhere to sell them around here because there are other municipalities that have opened. And it's essentially because they've been able to get ahold of their health unit. I know that there has been a competition.
If I can just interrupt you, Counselor Noble. I sent this very question yesterday because I've already had inquiries to Dr. Paul. Dr. Paul said he has sent this question to the province and that he's, because he's had it from a couple of other mayors in Prescott Russell as well. He will get back to us as soon as possible. I was hoping that it would be today, but it could be tomorrow. So we're definitely, we're definitely going to get an answer on that just so that these markets can hopefully get open. I think it's important, these people rely on this, so.
Yes, because they have their locations picked out, so that's great. Okay, so the bigger issue, the one that I was looking into was if we can address Ministry of Agriculture, OMAFRA, even lower OFA, somebody to relax, even if it's temporarily, because we're living in this whole new world and even if it is just over the summer and to address the food insecurity, to look at farm gate sales, if we can increase the number of products that are out there, if we can look at home slaughter. We all used to be able to slaughter our animal, our own animals. That's no longer a possibility. And of course, because the big guys were shutting down, the little guys are backed up to increase promotion of CSAs where you grow a whole bunch of products and people pick them up. So again, you're doing the whole social distancing. And then the milk dumping, that relates to my original question back to him in January of last year about milk being an illegal substance and marijuana not. So if you want to say that milk is impotable, quote unquote, then at least be able to sell all this excess milk without getting penalized or fined by the Milk Marketing Board for people who are going to make cheese and cook it and take care of that whole issue. Although we really, there's a couple of cases that I can bring up of locals getting sick on raw milk. The rest of this whole area has drank it for generations. So there's a whole lot of big issues that I'd have to address. But I wanted to know if this was something that we could start on? If we could ask other municipalities for help on? If it's the Ministry of Ag that we have to start with? Or if it's our local representative that we have to start with? Or, but my question today, and I was hoping Mr. Mann will be on here too, Mr. Eggman. If we could start this, if I could have support from this council, this committee of the whole and then council, and then start this big address. Unfortunately, this is going to have to be something that gets worked on within a month or so. Otherwise, it's not, not that it's not worth it, but it's a very timely subject.
Any comments from members of council?
I would say that if you want to put the work into it, for sure. But, you know, make sure that before anything goes out in the township's name, that it's vetted by staff and council. And maybe that that could be brought forward to, you know, whatever the next meeting is that it's prepared for and we could present that at a, at a future meeting and go through it then. Everybody okay with that? Yep.
Yeah, I'm good.
And just so you know, that Counselor Wensink is still on the, on the call. She's sending, she's sending messages on the side.
Yeah, I see it there.
I wish it was up to the buyer to take the risk.
Okay, so that's great. We're going to go quickly through matters arising from the minutes. Nothing on the first two. Council Massey is not here. Anything on Glengarry Pioneer Museum?
No, just Robin Flockton's book and Peggy Calder's passing.
Okay, thank you. Glengarry Archives update. My only update is please drive by the building. It looks fabulous. The windows are in, they're starting to put in the, it's, the whole building has changed. So take, take a ride by, it's looking awesome.
Yeah, and Jeff did the tour the other day and I did it last week.
Yeah.
Yeah. Inside is.
Inside is absolutely beautiful. Yeah, they've done the big, the big, the big baseboards and the, yeah, it looks, it looks so nice in there. Wow.
Yep. Arts, Culture and Heritage, any updates?
Not much. You, you know about the, everyone knows about the grotto, going to continue in virtual form this summer. The Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee reviewed the, has reviewed the community improvement plan and has recommended some changes and that'll come to council later.
Thank you, Counselor Manley. County Council update, Deputy Mayor Williams, County Council on Tuesday?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, County Council met and did review some financial implications of COVID to the county. There is, there's, there's kind of a cascading, a series of events that are going to affect the county budget. But the good news is, is that County Council decided to mitigate some of the over costs by, by putting some dollars into reserves. So that was a very responsible thing to do. Also, it's continued to investing in, in roads and in the Dundas Manor, which County Council committed to as well as the Maxville Manor. So, so that's all good. I, off the top of my head, I can't think of anything else. Mr. Mayor, what am I missing?
Nope, that's good. That's good. Just to, if you're, you know, in, as far as the deficits go, in most departments, there, there won't be deficits, there'll be savings. The deficits are happening in POA, which is where, you know, the tickets are, ticket volume is down with definitely with the OPP in the city. So that's where we're seeing the greatest hit. And secondly, it's in shared services. You know, our paramedics are, you know, are doing testing and there's several other items going on with our emergency services. So we're seeing an increase there as well. So those are pretty much the only two departments that it's, it's hitting hard. Friends of the Trails? We take her along. Joanne?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so the complete Gary Fenn trails in use with social distancing. The grant that was applied for, we weren't successful in receiving the funds. So we will be looking hopefully for donations from user. I think it's early stages for that discussion.
Perfect, thank you. Community Development Committee, Deputy Mayor Williams?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Development Committee has, has begun work with the consultant on the economic development or the, the development and marketing plan. And, you know, we had a Zoom meeting with the committee and the consultant, and we're able to discuss timelines and, and expectations of the committee with the consultant. So it started off very much on the right foot. And we're all hopeful that we're going to end up with a, with a plan that is going to be very useful to the township in the, in the long run. Other than that, I think that there are various issues that have kind of been postponed because of COVID.
Thank you very much. Okay, notice of motion, next Committee of the Whole meeting is Wednesday, June 17th, 2020 at 3:00 PM via Zoom. I'd like to thank the members of council for participating today and also to the people that are watching on Facebook. Thank you for joining us. I have a motion to adjourn moved by Counselor Wensink, seconded by Counselor Noble. There being no further business discussed, the meeting was adjourned at 4:30 PM. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Have a good rest of the day. Bye.